Thirty. This is a scheduled board meeting of the Gorden Public Schools Board of Directors and we'll call the meeting over.
Yes, we just thank you for today. We just thank you for once again being able to join together. And we just thank you for tasking us with the decision to help guide our schools in the right direction. What we just pray for your guidance and your leadership as we do these things. And God, once again, we pray for safety for our schools and just for success. God, we just ask that we do your will during these meetings and throughout the day at school. Thank you for all that you do. Amen.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? There's a lot of minutes in there, but wasn't a whole lot to each minute. So anybody have any questions? Higher motion?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in sent same side. That motion passed.
As a superintendent's report, basically most everybody, well, I guess four of you were here this afternoon. I thought it went pretty well, but I'm sort of biased. You know, probably would like to hear from some of you that were here, what you thought, how it went or any comments about it. For the other board members that weren't there, wasn't able to make it.
I thought the presentation good. We'll, we'll know how it comes here in the next day or two, I'm sure, but I thought the presentation of the information was presented good, I think.
Very clear with the thoughts and then very open. So I think there's going to be some open meetings like we talked about for you to meet at every school and kind of address any concern.
Okay, the calendar change. You've got that in front of you. We talked about it last week, but you know, I've got permission to do that and we just need to, it'll be February fifteenth, March fifteenth, April nineteenth and May seventeenth, which will get out at two thirty, just sort of like today. And we just need you to approve that or not approve it. Now, on these days, instruction will start five minutes earlier.
We approved the calendar change for twenty-two point three. That's stated on page nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
Okay, we're we had a proof for a partnership. You know, for a whole new building. And we, you know, gonna rescind that and not do that at this time. We just need a motion to rescind that motion. Rescind that partnership.
We have a motion second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
In light of what we did today, I've asked Jason to come and you know, and either prove or disprove my facts, my, my, my facts, my estimates, you know, and sort of give you the low down of what, what to do. He and I've talked and what we've decided to do is we're going to make a motion in the superintendent recommendations. But he will be back next month in order to do the official documents. Okay? Go ahead, Jason.
Thanks. So yeah, what I'd like to do tonight is just more of an informational item. We've been through a lot of this information last time I was here, but I want to walk you through it again, just kind of give you a sense. This, this is what you have up for you tonight. It's going to look somewhat similar, but I've included a lot more information related to millage campaigns, millage strategies, the financing strategy. We're looking at doing some different things like that. So if you allow me, I'd like to be very transparent and walk you through each page. So it might take a few minutes, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page before we make some big decisions for the district. So you'll see a table of contents there. So if you, as you go home and you look it over, you can kind of see if you want to jump ahead to different areas and look, that's available to you. Page two is your current assessed value as well as your history. As you see, you guys have been pretty flat, like we talked about last time, which I wouldn't say is a negative. It's a positive for especially for planning purposes, because we can kind of look at this and say, well, we've at least have been around this particular area. So it helps us kind of going forward. We're assuming and we haven't assumed growth in any of the financial modeling we've done, but you would assume that we're going to see some growth going forward just because that's what's happened over the last years. Again, not big, but maybe, you know, a hundred thousand, a couple hundred thousand dollars. You'll see too, just as a reminder, the bulk of your monies are coming off of real property and personal property. So to me, that's a good thing. I mean, you guys obviously have the plant here and that's a, a big factor in terms of why your assessed value is what it is. So if something major happens out there, it will impact you in terms of your overall financials. But we're going to get into that in just a second, but just kind of want to remind you of that information. Your new assessed value will come out in March. We can probably go ahead and get it now in terms of what the preliminary would be, but it'll be finalized around the March timeline. So we'll have that new number before we do any kind of financing and kind of know exactly what that looks like. On the next page, I've gone ahead and this is your millage structure. Again, you've seen this type of information the last time we were together, but I've included some additional stuff here related to kind of the top ten millages in the state. I know if I was in the public and asking questions, probably want to know where I fall in terms of where it relates to where you guys are in your millage. Out of two hundred and thirty-five school districts, currently you're at a hundred and seventy-two in terms of your ranking. The top ten, it's kind of fascinating when you look at these, you'll see, you know, number one, Earl, very small rural area, fifty-four point eight, obviously a very big number. But you look just a couple down, you'll see North Little Rock is also a very big millage rate, even though they have a billion dollar plus assessed value. So I mean, obviously a much bigger district, but just kind of interesting. You would expect the Poens of the world, which have, you know, less than a twenty million dollars assessed value to have a much higher assessed va- or I'm sorry, millage rate, just because their assessed value is so low. But just some, some additional information for you there. That second bullet in the middle of the page, just a reminder, you know, based on your current assessed value, one mill at a ninety-five percent collection rate is generating approximately sixty-four thousand dollars per mill. At a hundred percent collection rate, it's approximately sixty-seven thousand dollars. So kind of give you a sense. You know, for our planning purposes, we're thinking about this from a, a lower tax collection at ninety-five percent for your financing. But if you were to talk to the public, say, what does one mill bring in? It's just easy math, just say sixty-seven thousand dollars a year in terms of what that looks like. On page four, just some more comparative data for you to kind of see where you guys fall. We were talking earlier, you know, I, I've been in discussion with a couple of other districts that have been talking about doing millage campaigns in the surrounding area. So I think you're going to see more and more districts moving past the forty mark. So if you're kind of thinking about where should we be? Obviously, our decisions are data driven by what you guys need, but just so you know, from a political standpoint, kind of thinking about where you guys fall when it compares to other districts. Again, this is where it currently is, but we're having discussions with others about higher millage rates, just so you're aware of that. Page five, we've included some information about if you were to add an additional mill, what does one mill bring in? This was in the presentation today, the seven mills down there at the bottom, but just to give you some context about what other millage rates would look like. You can see what that would be, but based on the seven mill increase, you can see if you had property of fifty thousand dollars, you're going to be assessed at twenty percent, which at seven would be that seventy dollars or five eighty-three per month and then so on and so forth.
I did get permission to steal this stuff.
This though, again, keep in mind, everybody's scenario is going to be different, as you know, but I, we've gotten feedback in the past, well, this isn't exactly what my, well, yeah, we know it's really hard for us to go individual by individual and tell you what your tax base is going to be. But at least it gives you somewhat of a swag, a kind of where your property, how much it would impact you as a property owner as it relates to what the increase would be. On page six, again, just, this is their third quarter average ADM. Just a reminder for those that may not have seen it in the presentation today, it was there. It's also here, just kind of your student enrollment and where it's been. Again, this is third quarter average ADM. So these numbers are just a little bit different than what was in the presentation today, just because of you're pulling different data points into the year enrollment versus say, the third quarter.
I just add one more leg on there and I just showed what it is right now, which you went from six twenty-four down to we're you know, sixteen.
And so the next part is just going to talk about this a little bit too. This is your current bonded debt. This is exactly what you've seen before. Nothing has changed. You haven't had any new debt to this. What you'll see is that you have the one taxable bond issue that we did back in twenty nineteen to do the, the field and the, and the track, the athletic facility. You'll see that you currently owe one point two, three, five in terms of what's outstanding. And then you'll see on the other bond issue, which refinanced back in July of twenty twenty of approximately three million, seven, ten. What we're going to propose to do is keep the twenty nineteen bond issue outstanding. There's tax reasons for that because we did that bond issue taxable, so you can accept donations from private parties to help make payments on that. So we want to keep that outstanding as a taxable bond issue, but we want to restructure this twenty twenty bond issue. And I'm going to show you what that looks like in a second. When I say restructure, the easiest way to think about this is I have a house, I've been paying a thousand dollars a month in terms of my mortgage payment. I'm about to pay my house off. I want to build that extension onto my house. And so I'm willing to incur additional debt and stretch my payment out for a longer period of time. And we'll talk about what that repayment term is as it relates to your situation. But when I say restructure, that's what we're referring to. We're going to basically take it and extend it out and pick up the additional monies. As a visual person, I like to see kind of what your debt payments look like. And you'll see by fiscal year, the top part is your current debt service. This is your bonded debt payment. So again, those two bonded debt issues. The, the first one, the twenty-nineteens, we've already talked about is the taxable issue. You'll see that the payment is approximately a hundred and forty thousand. And then you'll see on the twenty-twenty bonds, it's approximately four hundred and ten thousand. So again, the twenty-twenty's are the ones we're going to look at restructuring. Right now, you're used to making a payment of approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That second table takes into account two other types of borrowings that you guys have done, which is a post-stated warrant and an installment contract. There's very small amounts of money. Again, this is things you would use for a new school bus or for copiers or things like that. But what we're going to be focused on is your bonded debt, but just so you can see it in its entirety, that's what that second table shows you. On page nine, again, this is what we need to focus on, take a minute to just remind you about is because this is going to impact us when we change the millage rate. This is what we call our coverage analysis. This shows you that based on the twenty-twenty-one assessed value of sixty-seven million at eleven mills at a ninety-five percent collection rate, it generates revenues of approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. I just showed you what your current bonded debt service payment is, which is about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you subtract the two, the surplus debt service revenue or the amount of money available, excess revenues to cover your payment is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand or one point two seven times, meaning you basically have twenty-seven cents more available to you to cover your debt service payment. This is important because your assessed value could go down again, if something were to happen at the plant, they shut down a wing, whatever it is, if that were to go to another direction, that surplus revenue is available to make sure that your payment is covered. We don't ever want to see that coverage number dip below a one point two times. We, we want you to have some cushion that's available to you for those types of movements. And right now you have that available to you. So we want to preserve that as we go forward. Just to get some additional growth information there at the bottom, you can see again, not huge growth, but you have seen some growth year to year in terms of what that looks like as it relates to the growth on your debt service revenue. So I'm going to stop there and see if you have any questions about your current situation before I start messing with it.
Explain the difference between what I had and what you had.
In terms of the debt service.
No, the surplus.
Yeah. So we, in terms of surplus revenues, we're showing a hundred and fifty thousand today and the presentation was three hundred thousand. That was based on the current fiscal year, which in talking to Rhonda, I think the plant gave a hundred thousand dollars this year and some other revenues. Taxes and revenues in lieu of taxes that came in. So that number was somewhat inflated for this year, but going forward, it may not be that number. So the numbers are reflected here, do not take that into account. So you guys are a little bit better this particular year. And so there were excess, more excess dollars available. But as you think about this, just from a tax revenue standpoint, off of your eleven mills, this is what's available to you. So that is the difference between those two numbers.
So the ninety-five percent tax collection rate is, is in one place you would say assumes, is, is that just the normal thing you do is make that assumption? Or is that accurate?
It, what we can do, as we get into this, we can get a little bit more down to it. What we can do is like a five-year average. And so it might be closer to ninety-three percent collections. It could be ninety-eight percent collections, ninety-five percent.
Rhonda, you can tell me like in terms of a three-year, like on average, you're probably bringing in what? Ninety-ish percent? What do you remember? I can look real quick. I've got it. I guess I'm naive in this. How, how do you only get ninety-five percent collection rate? I thought the government was real good at collecting.
Yeah, well, not everybody pays their taxes.
When the land commissioner gets land, they don't pay, they don't pay land, you know, they don't pay taxes back to the county. If, if like, you know, a piece of land gets you know, sent to the land commissioner because the landlord didn't pay taxes, well, then the state don't pay during that time. Is that correct?
Correct. So it, not everybody pays their taxes. So there could be an opportunity where, like I'm, I pulled the, these are the five-year collections for you guys. Now, some of it's over a hundred percent because delinquent filings may come in the next year. And so it bumps up the average, or I mean, the, the annual. You guys, over the five years, has been right around a hundred percent collections. But in eighteen, seventeen, eighteen, you're at ninety-seven percent collections. In eighteen, nineteen, you're at ninety-eight percent collections. So it's just not always at a full hundred percent, just because not everybody pays those taxes. So so we back, just to be conservative, we back it down to ninety-five percent. Okay. So on page ten, this is where I kind of want to get into the details of what we're proposing to do. So you'll see here in terms of your financing assumptions that we've made, the repayment term. This is one thing that we're talking about doing that's going to be a little bit different for you guys that we not normally would do, is that we're looking at a thirty-five-year repayment term. And I'm going to get into why that is in just a second, but the thirty-five-year repayment term, the reason we potentially could do that is because of the renovations to the cafeteria. It has a very long useful life. We're putting on or potentially fixing a facility, which is brick and mortar. We're not financing just technology or fence or something like that. We've assumed zero percent growth. We're assuming a flat interest rate of five percent. We're assuming that we're going to refinance or restructure, excuse me, the twenty-twenty bonds. We're assuming an estimated construction fund of four million dollars. And we're assuming with the payoff would be approximately three million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. I put that there because again, when you're doing this, we've got to pull out just assumptions in time. So we're assuming that the election is successful in May and that you guys would be closing on the transaction in August. As of August one, that is what the principal and interest would be outstanding on the twenty-twenty bond issue. So when you look down, once you understand kind of the breakdown of funds, the sources and uses of funds, you'll see that we're looking at a bond issue size of approximately seven million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Again, you'll see down there in the uses of funds, project funds of four million dollars. You'll see the purpose or the primary purpose fund, that's that paying off the old bonds of three million, three fifty-two. You'll see total underwriters discount. We've assumed a flat two percent. This is a fee that is paid to the underwriter of the bonds, the investment bank that's going to buy your bonds and actually give you the money to pay off the old and the four million. It's industry standard to assume two percent when we structure it. They don't always take the full two percent. So that number, whenever they actually buy your bonds away from you, might actually be closer to a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars or some other number. But for, just for structuring purposes, to make sure that we're being conservative, we've assumed a flat two percent. Cost of issuance, those are fees related to attorneys, trustees, me, et cetera. That's included in there. If we've assumed forty-eight thousand five. Or you'll see the trustee fee has been broken out. And then you'll see rounding amount, a rounding amount. So in our world, we have to sell bonds in five thousand dollar increments. So there's always a little bit in rounding. That money's your money. It'll just come back and be put into the construction fund when it's said and done. We have sized this at seven million, five hundred and sixty thousand. This is the number that would appear on the ballot based on a four million dollar construction fund. So again, if you decide that you want to downsize it to three and a half million, or you want to go to, you know, if, if you want to downsize it, we, this number can stay at seven million, five sixty. If you want it to be a bigger number, let's see, it wouldn't be five million. That has to be put on the ballot and so we'd have to up it by another million dollars. Whatever is on the ballot and is approved by the voters is your authorization. You can't issue any more debt than what the voters approve. So that's something you need to be aware of. So again, in this scenario, and we've made this assumption for tonight's conversation, you'll see, we've assumed these variables and it would be seven million, five hundred and sixty thousand would be the authorizing amount on the ballot. Now, you can always come back and maybe you get into this and you get a little more partnership or whatever that case may be. And you don't need to issue that full amount. You don't have to issue seven million, five hundred and sixty. You could issue less. You just can't issue more than. So just want you to be aware of that. What does that mean for you? So on page eleven, this is what the new scenario would look like. So as I've already mentioned to you, you'll see a thirty-five-year repayment term going out to fiscal year twenty fifty-eight. You'll see the bonded debt from the twenty nineteen bond issue. You'll see we're assuming four million dollars in construction funds. So to finance the seven million, and we've assumed a flat seven million, five sixty for this, this chart. You'll see the payments for that. Now you'll look at those payments and note that they're, they're smaller in those early years. And the reason I've structured it that way is the basically what we call wrap around your existing payment. When you look at your total debt service though, you'll see that it's pretty even throughout. But the idea is I didn't want you guys to be hit with a big payment in those years because you're overlaying debt on top of it. So I've, I've pushed some principal down there to allow for us to kind of wrap around existing debt. And you'll see what your total debt service payment would be based on the assumptions we've talked about would be approximately five hundred and thirty thousand in those early years. And then when it, when that other issue pays off, you'll see it fall slightly down to about five hundred and ten thousand. What does that mean for you? So with the new millage rate being, it's basically it'll be eighteen, adding the seven to it. At eighteen, new debt service mills, it will generate revenues approximately one point one million dollars based on your current assessed value. All right. That money though, just to so you understand timing, if it passes in May, the voters vote, they approve it. The quorum court doesn't actually levy that tax until November. Once that's levied, you guys actually won't see revenues until October of the next year. So again, that's in part why we've kept those payments low in those early years, because you're used to making that payment of approximately five hundred and fifty thousand. So we don't, you know, want to make sure that you're not strapped in that time being. But it'll take a little bit of time for those monies to start to flow into the district. But once they do, you'll see that you'll have that surplus debt service revenue approximately six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars available to you. So we're taking that from one fifty of debt service revenue coming off of your current millage rate up to the six twenty-five, and then you'll see it gets even higher once the other debt falls off. And so it goes to about almost six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Okay? The reason, going back real quick, the reason why I was proposing us to do a thirty-five-year repayment term versus doing a thirty-year repayment term. Voters, again, will have to authorize how long these bonds are, can be outstanding. If, because we're thinking about doing a new project down the road a couple of years from now, what this would allow us to do is go ahead and do everything now. Ask the voters for that millage increase, get it on the books, do the things that you need to do to get the district in financials condition and where it needs to be. And then two, three years from now, you can come back and you can actually do a full thirty-year borrowing and still have the ability to do that because you would still have that capacity, because that's what the voters would allow you to do.
And you wouldn't have to go back to the voters.
You wouldn't have to go back to the voters. What we would be doing is we would be taking money from this surplus revenue. So again, in today's numbers, if you kind of think about today's rates, I was saying earlier, it's approximately seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand, probably closer to seventy-five thousand dollars per million over a thirty-year period. So again, if you think about it that way, you'd be taking seventy-five thousand of your current revenues or the new revenues to get a million dollars in construction monies. And so what we would do is pull from that and it would allow us to do the financing for the new facility. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you, so let me stop there and see.
But that would be only if you decided to do that.
Correct. That's right. You don't have to do that. That's right.
Is the five percent, this is financing assumptions, five percent. How, how accurate is that? Is that going to change?
I mean, it's, we don't know the exact rate yet because of what in Arkansas, school districts are required to do, it's called a competitive sale process. So we actually bid them out. So we won't know exactly what the rate will be. Right now, I would tell you that that's very conservative. For thirty-five-year bond issue, you're probably looking, you know, closer to four seventy-five or something like that. It could go up a little bit. I mean, I can't, we can't make any guarantees. So if it went up a little bit, it would just, the interest cost would eat into your surplus revenues and what that would be.
So it could be less than that.
It could be less than that.
And it could be more than.
It could be more than that. Yeah. And there's no way to know until we actually go to market. And so that's, that's just, that's the risk here. So we've tried to be conservative in terms of our planning. And we think we're being conservative, but again, if something were to happen, then it could go up, it could go down.
I always go there with you. Look at the market here. And look at some of the changes. How y'all see it's going to be more competitive or less competitive if we decide we're going to market then? Like the last thing, it was, it was, it was on our side. They were spying by our bonds.
Sure.
But I'm looking at some of the market right now.
Well, from a buyer's standpoint, people are actually, they want municipal bonds because rates are getting to a level now where it's tax exempted five percent. And so potentially it could be, it could be really good for you guys. Good in the sense that you're going to have demand for your bonds. Rates, unfortunately, when we refinance, for those that were on the board last time, we refinanced at such a low rate. And we're not going to see that again, probably unless something really bad happens. But point being is, I mean, there's definitely going to be demand for your bonds when it comes to summertime. I think, and kind of we were talking about this a little bit earlier, there is some thoughts that rates may come down a little bit because once it starts, the base rate may not come down. The Fed may set it, but they may start to stabilize and people get more comfortable. And then there's more people to kind of fight over municipal bonds. It'll kind of drive the rate down some. Because it's just a supply and demand issue. There's only so many bond issues out there, therefore people are fighting for it. And through this competitive bidding process, which schools do, you know, all these different firms, different investment banks come together and basically will bid it. And so you'll get a range of, of interest rates. And so, and typically nine times out of ten, you're going to take the lowest rate that you get. So. But I can't, yeah, we can't make any guarantees about where that rate might be. So we try to be conservative because obviously we're planning for the future, but, and that could be, just to be frank, three years from now, rates may be at ten percent. And then this whole financial plan may not work anymore because it eats so much of your excess revenues out that you can't afford to do in the new project. Could go the other way. It could be the rates are so good that you get more for your money. It just kind of depends on the circumstances. But under this scenario, what we're looking at again, is approximately after the, the twenty nineteen bonds payoff, you're looking at approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars based off of your current assessed value that you would have available to you. This surplus debt service revenue, this coverage revenue is not restricted. It can be used for any permissible school purpose. You can use it for, to pay teachers. You can use it to keep the lights on, whatever you want to use it for. Unlike your M and O mills, M and O mills can't be used. They can be used for maintenance and operation. You can't borrow with that revenue stream. You can't use those monies to build capital improvement projects or finance anything. So this money though, that too, not only can you maintain and operate, but you can also borrow against like we've just been talking about, just so you're aware.
I have that much excess debt revenue in a school the size of being, is, is really a good thing. And what it does is it allows you to maintain your own destiny instead of, you know, your numbers may go, your student numbers could continue to go down, but this number would not go down unless your assessment went down. Okay? And so you know, that's where I was talking about today was you know, you've got to, even if our numbers continue to go down, we've got to make a plan to where we still be financially feasible and viable.
The only other thing I would add too is if you did nothing, let's just say we put the brakes on everything and did nothing. In twenty thirty-two, your debt service mills will sunset when the debt pays off. Okay? If you had, this millage is successful and you go forward, you guys will not have to think about another millage increase until there's another major capital improvement project way down the road. And I'm talking, because we've already taken into account your next capital improvement project. But you won't have to think about any kind of millage increase in theory till you're probably ten years from twenty fifty-eight. So you guys, as board members, are setting the district up, you know, kind of long-term, not to have to worry about that. Unless some other big capital improvement project comes along.
You absolutely don't want your mills to expire. I mean, because when you, I mean, your debt to expire, when your debt expires, then the mills go away. I mean, because when you, I mean, your debt to expire, when your debt expires, then the mills go away. Okay, so that would not only lose that money, but you would lose all your excess debt revenue. It's, and then if you decide to do something, you've got to get those mills plus other mills.
I mean, I like this excess surplus number growing. I mean, if you were conservative about, you could do small projects in-house and not borrow nothing.
With, with good financial planning, okay, down the road. And what you need to be doing is, is these other things that we're talking about doing is, you know, with the, you know, saving the money, you know, with our numbers as far as FTEs and teachers. You take care of that kind of money and then you budget a savings every year. And, and you're saying, because you're building it for, you know, for the future. And so you build up that and then all of a sudden you need something. You now have a, you have that instead of having to go to the voters. That makes sense. Now you wouldn't have fifty million dollars, I mean, you know, or something for a whole brand new school, but you would have, you ought to be able to, like I talked today about, you need to budget your technology, you need to budget your safety and security. You need to budget all those things where you're on a rotating basis, but you're not right now because you're just trying to make ends meet.
The excess revenues, that's correct. Hmm. Now, the four million dollars, that's restricted to certain capital improvement projects, um, which we, was in the presentation today is what we're kind of considering. Those funds, what we're proposing here and kind of get a little bit into the weeds, so bear with me. But we're proposing a tax-exempt municipal bond issue. What does that mean? It means that the investors that buy these bonds don't have to pay taxes on it. So there's a lot of rules that come with this. That four million dollars not only has to be used for a capital improvement project, but it has to be used for a project that has a long useful life. That useful life has to match up with that repayment term. The second thing is, is it has to be paid off or you have to use those funds or eighty-five percent of those funds within a three-year period. The reason you have to do that is because back in the seventies, when interest was really high, public entities would borrow money at tax-exempt rates and they would stick it into a CD that had a high interest-bearing account and they would just earn money off of that. And the government didn't like that because obviously there was no tax revenues that they were getting off of that. So they restricted it. So they want you to know that you have a project and then what you should spend that money is pretty quickly once you get it. If you want it to be tax-exempt. And that's one of the reasons, it's kind of a sidebar, but that's one of the reasons we did the field is taxable. Because if you do it as taxable, all those rules go away and you don't have to worry about a lot of those things. They don't want a private entity to basically get the benefit of tax-exempt dollars. And so in theory, they could argue, well, if somebody's giving you donations and they're getting the benefit of certain things. So we just took all that off the table by doing the taxable bond issue that time. So. So it's a long-winded answer to your question, but that, um, is in part why we set it up that way. Any questions about the numbers before, or other questions, I'm happy to answer anything you have. So the next part on page twelve, I just wanted you to have a little bit of information about the elections. Um, this is stuff you probably already know as elected officials, but just kind of understand when you can have an election and what's required. But more importantly, page thirteen and fourteen, I went ahead and put together a timeline, a sequence of events, assuming that everything goes according to plan. Now, what this proposes to do is on their next board meeting on the twenty-first, I'm gonna come back to you with a proposed budget of expenditures, with a resolution adopting that proposed budget of expenditures um, and the documentation associated with that. I brought copies of that, that's behind tab one. We're gonna walk through that in a second because I want you to know exactly what you're gonna be adopting. And then you can see the next steps that are involved, leading up to the election being May ninth. The most critical thing is, is that we get this proposed budget, uh, published at least sixty days prior to the election. That has to happen because it's a constitutional amendment. If it doesn't happen, um, basically our election will be null and void, even if you go through this. So it's expending a lot of political energy and, and effort for the, nothing really being able to accomplish if we don't have that take place. So that's why I have us adopting the proposed budget on the twenty-first and then subsequently be published right after that. If the election is successful, you can kind of see what the next steps are as it relates to the financing. We need to put together after that, once we get certification, once we go to the referendum period, we'll put together what we refer to as a preliminary official statement. It's basically a bond offering document. It tells the story of the district, the financing, what you guys are up to, all of that. That will then be distributed to investors so they can look at it, do their due diligence, figure out if they want to participate. And then we set a date and a time, and in this particular case, and there's nothing magical about these dates other than the hard sixty days and things like that. But you'll see, I've temporarily set a, a bond sale date of July the eleventh. And then coming before the board on the eighteenth for us to close on August the first. And on August the first, you would actually be wired four million dollars into the account to be able to spend, um, as we've discussed. So let me, we talked about the proposed budget, so I'm gonna skip forward. If you go behind tab one here, I wanted to show you this really quickly. This is pretty short and sweet, but I wanted you guys to see this because the next time we get together, I don't want you to be caught off guard by anything. So this is the resolution. This resolution basically states that you're going to go forward with adopting the, uh, proposed budget of expenditures, which we'll talk about in a sec, in a second. And it talks about the other things that it authorizes, uh, you guys to do. So you have a chance to read that and we could talk about it. But more importantly, the next page, you'll see the proposed budget of expenditures for the upcoming year. As you know, every year you're required to adopt a proposed budget of expenditures. That proposed budget of expenditures is two years into the future. So this one is for twenty-four, twenty-five. You probably have seen it on the ballot when you go to vote, the school election, or there's always an election for the millage on the ballot, even though, even if it gets voted down, as long as it's tied to a bond issue, it's not gonna go away, but it still has to appear on the ballot.
Jason, I don't want to stop you, but remember, we got five new board members on here that have never done any of this.
Okay, gotcha. Alright. So, so let me back up.
Rodney and Rodney and Bernard are the only two that's even come close to going through that. They're all new since May.
Let me back dip that, and that's right. Sorry, I apologize. So.
You said that a couple of times, y'all, I know y'all know this, but they don't know this, okay, probably.
Gotcha. So the proposed budget of expenditures, for those that don't know, you're required, under the constitution, to pass a proposed budget of expenditures, which indicates where you plan to be two years from now. You don't really know where you're gonna be two years from now, but that's what the requirement is. So when you look at these numbers, how did you, we are getting, next question is, how did you arrive at these numbers? Well, we work with the district and typically we take last year's number, which goes back many years, and we add two percent to these numbers in terms of maintenance and operation and things like that. Down here at the bottom though, what you'll see is non-bonded debt payment and bonded debt payment. The bonded debt payment is based on what we think your payment will be in that particular year based on the new borrowing. And then you'll see the building fund expense, which is really just the money that'll be in your building fund. I've assumed four million dollars and that you guys might have about five hundred thousand dollars in your building fund in that year. Now, there's nothing special about these numbers, other than just kind of giving an indication to the public where you guys would be.
And it's not legally ob, it's not, you're not obligating to have that two years from now.
Right.
If it's something happens and it's different, it's no problem.
So I would encourage you, the next part, it's a lot of legalese, but I just want to touch on a few things. Typically, what you would see in your proposed budget is, here is what our millage rate is, we're proposing no change. Do you vote for it? Yes or no? That type of thing. In this case though, there's some language that's been added, so I just want to point it out to you. So when you go down towards the middle of this, you'll see as provided in amendment number seventy-four, the statewide uniform rate replaces a portion of the existing, et cetera, et cetera. The total proposed school tax levy of forty-three mills includes twenty-five mills specifically voted for general maintenance and operation. Eleven mills voted for debt service, previously voted as a continuing levy and pledged for the retirement of existing bonded indebtedness. You can tell a lawyer wrote this, right? And seven new debt service mills. So that's where the seven new mills is being indicated. The seven new debt service mills, plus the eleven, so on and so forth, you'll see, goes on and on, will be a continuing debt service tax until the retirement of the proposed bonds to be issued in the principal amount of seven million, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and which will mature over a period of thirty-five years. And will be issued for the purpose of refunding the district's refunding bonds dated July seventh, twenty twenty, and constructing and equipping various capital improvements to existing school facilities. Now, we've kept that last part pretty broad because you've got a lot of different projects that you're looking at doing. If you wanted to, we could get a little bit more specific, but it will box you in a little bit because the voters are basically gonna, this is what they're voting on. This is what they authorize you to do. Again, thirty-five years is what we're asking them to levy that for. Seven million, five sixty is the maximum amount that you could borrow. You don't have to do that much, but you can't exceed that number because that's what voters have authorized you to do. You'll go on and you'll see, the surplus revenues produced each year by the debt service millage may be used by the district for other school purposes. So that will be on the ballot. So again, the voters will know that when they read the ballot, that that is what you'll use any excess revenues for. And the total proposed tax levy of forty-three mills represents a seven mil increase over the current tax rate. Now, this is the proposed budget. You will adopt this. If this is the, how you choose to go forward next month, this is what you would adopt. This is the language that will actually be on the ballot too. What the difference between your proposed budget and the ballot language is, is that after the total proposed tax levy represents seven mil increase, there will be two blocks for tax, against tax. And that will be the ballot. So again, this, by publishing it, you're basically indicating to the public exactly what you plan to do with the millage for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, because that's when the monies will actually start to, to flow in. So again, when we talk about adopting the proposed budget of expenditures, that's what we'll do. And then going forward, if this passes next calendar year, you will have to adopt a proposed budget of expenditures and have it published sixty days prior to your general election, which would be the same timeframe, but it will represent no increase. It'll just say forty-three mills, represents what's been levy, et cetera. And it'll be a much shorter block of tax. A millage question can only be voted one time per calendar year. If it fails in May, you guys cannot come back and ask for another millage until next calendar year. And you can do it at one of four dates. You can do it in March, you can do it in May, you can do it in August, and you can do it in November. And there's pros and cons to all those dates, but same thing, you could come back next May, uh, just like you're proposing to do now, and then ask again if it were to fail. So if you're, that, sometimes I get that question about timing, when's the next time we could do it? It would be basically a year from when you're doing it. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you, so please, any questions you have, let me know.
This, this markup of this ballot, does you propose the vagueness of this? Or like you talked about, make it more detailed, but box us in, so it's like.
I'm inclined to keep it the way it is, just because it does give you more flexibility. If you get into a project and you don't have enough money for something, or maybe you need to pivot and go a different direction because of whatever reason, this allows you to do so. If you specifically say we're gonna do these three things and you run out of money and then you didn't do the third thing, I don't know if there's any kind of, I don't think there's any legal ramifications necessarily, but again, it's on, it's very specific versus kind of keeping it more broad. So I would encourage you to keep it more broad, but again, I've worked with some districts that it wasn't going to pass unless it specifically said this is for an elementary school. They didn't want any wiggle room. They want to know exactly what it's going for. And again, so I would defer to you guys, but just to give you flexibility, I would encourage you to use this language.
Also, with, in, in other, people are now are getting in trouble, not in trouble, but people upset because they said this is for this, this, and this. Construction costs have gone way up. So somebody has to decide we're only gonna get this and, you know, there's only two of those three we're gonna get. And people now, well, I voted and we're not getting, you know, I voted for the millage and you're not doing this. So the more vague you can be, the better, but you know, we need, also the more vague leaves open for more questions. So that's something y'all need to think about.
Well, you can be, you can be vague in this description, it's on the ballot, but then be more specific in other areas.
I can see pros and cons, I can see getting four million and then everybody say, well, I don't see nothing happening, we've voted four million dollars. You know, I can see it the other way too, but.
I think they'll see pretty quick. Any questions? He's done a lot of work with me, or he's done a lot of work for me. I'm not sure which way that, I don't know what it'd be done, but, and I've talked a lot about the presentation I made today and also what we're wanting to do. You know, there, there's a lot of good things can happen from this right here, if, if, if we can get it to go. So, uh, uh, I appreciate all you've done, Jason.
No, thank you. And as always, thank you for letting me work with you guys. Um, and again, we wanted to give you enough flexibility to have the time to digest this because I know it's a lot of information. So if you have any questions, obviously, uh, Mr. Fine can get with me and I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
So basically, he's gonna come back next month and do the actual documents. You know, but tonight we'll vote on my recommendations. Okay? But not legal as far as he's concerned.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Okay. Alright. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
And nope, you get back to Little Rock. It was still blocked not long ago.
Yeah, I guess it was. Well, that's what Waze is for, right? Good old GPS.
Is it, I don't know, but it may be clear by now. I don't know.
There you go.
My wife was on that. She ended up going through Sheridan to get to Little Rock. It was blocked all the way from Glen Rose to Past Benton, I mean, up to past the construction. Anyway.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. You don't take the wrong one. I'd hate to get a call from one of your clients. Okay, my recommendations for, uh, this year, you see it in the motions and I'm gonna make sure and read them exactly right, but, uh, my motions, there's number D and E is to approve the moving grades two through four to middle school and grade seven and eight to high school. And we probably need to do these separately.
Let's see that we move grades two through four to the middle school and grade seven and eight to the high school.
Alright, we have a motion in second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
And proceed with, uh, plans to ask voters in May for a seven mil increase. I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. Did you make the motion? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. I forgot my hearing aid this morning. I'm sorry.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign.
And the last one is proceed with plans to ask voters to extend the current debt from ten years to thirty-five years.
I'll make a motion that we proceed to, uh, with plans to ask voters to fix, extend the current debt from ten years to thirty-five years.
Okay, we have a motion in second. They're all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
Um, is there any reason to go into executive session? If not, if y'all read the personnel, is anybody, you know, accept the personnel package?
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed.
I, under other, I just put these down here and I didn't know he's gonna have, of course, I should have known, but anyway, those are just dates and, uh, and for you, it's not any kind of business. Okay? Not.
Or not any more questions, we'll move to adjourn.
And I'm gonna send in an email, uh, the PowerPoint from today to you, in case you didn't get it, in case you weren't there. You may have already done that. Have you done that? Would you do that?